Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Douglas Planning Board meeting for April 30th, 2020. The meeting is being recorded and is will be available for viewing on the Douglas Public Access Channel and on the Douglas website. We'll come to order at 7:05. First item on the agenda, public hearing, Cooperstown Road Realty Trust. Application for a definitive subdivision residential compound Hawk Hill Farms Estates. 768 and 772 Northwest Main Street. In accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 80T and 81U, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 9, the Town of Douglas rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in Douglas, Town of Douglas zoning bylaws, Section 4.4, residential compounds, and Section 9.3, special permits. The Douglas Planning Board will hold a public hearing for owners Roberts, S., and Christine Chapman, Joseph E. and Megan C. Schleschman, and Cooperstown Road Realty Trust for an application for a six lot definitive and residential compound subdivision entitled Hawk Hill Farms. The plan by Andrews Survey and Engineering dated February 3rd, 2020. Property location is 768 and 772 Northwest Main Street. Tax assessors map 109, parcels 1, 2, and 3, and tax assessors map 123, parcel 8. Public hearing is being held on Tuesday, March 24th, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the community meeting room, Municipal Center, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Copy of the application may be viewed in the Community Development Department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. Ernest Marks, Chairman, Douglas Planning Board, public hearing is now open.
Okay, before we get started on this, just a general, couple of general comments. I was asked by the Town Administrator to ask the Board to kind of just keep it short and, you know, to the point. Let's not, you know, go back and forth over a lot of things.
That's my plan.
Just so we can expedite this.
Yep. Okay, thank you, Bill. All right, is somebody here to present the plan? Yes, Tracy.
Tracy, have you also just recognized me as on remote, on present?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what she said.
She wants to be recognized her as being on remote.
Oh, yep. You so recognized, Tracy, you are on remote at the hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and the only one absent is Les Stevens.
He's coming.
Okay. All right, is someone here to present the plan? I'll talk about it.
Yep, I am. My name is Jude Ovan. I'm from Andrews Engineering. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
The screen keeps disappearing.
Okay. As stated in the description, this property is located in Northwest Main Street, and the applicant is looking to divide this a little bit further. There's two lots right now that exist that have homes on them. The applicant has joined with the neighbor, and they're looking to subdivide it further into residential compound and make four lots, so there's two additional lots that happen.
You want me to pull any of these out?
There's an existing driveway there now that varies between 16 and 12 feet. They're proposing to maintain that alignment and widen it where necessary from 12 feet to the required 16 feet. And at the end of the turnaround, they're, if the proposal look this to as a T-turnaround so that emergency vehicles can turn around and get into the site and back out.
Yeah, that's good.
There you go. So that's the, that's existing right now. So there should be another plan that showed the, the division, the division now.
Keep going up. Keep going up. Right there. Got it, sorry.
Perfect. So as you can see, Lot 1 and Lot 2 are the existing houses, and Lots 3 and 4 are the proposed new dwelling. That tan or brown area is the proposed private right-of-way cul-de-sac that accesses off Northwest Main Street and ends with that, that bulb at the end that'll become a T-turnaround. On parcel C is plans on being part of Lot 1, and the other parcels will just remain as parcels.
Bill?
So, what was the engineer's name?
Jude.
It was Jude from Andrews.
Oh, I've never met him.
Yeah.
Hi Jude. Did you get my comments that I emailed to Byron?
I did not.
Okay. If you, do you have a computer in front of you?
Yes.
Can you navigate to anyurl.com?
Would it be your comment letter number one?
Yes. Slash Douglas Planning Board.
You could do it this way, too.
Yeah, if you just saw on the screen.
Yeah, okay. So I did, well, let me start off by saying that the Emergency Operations Center, the Civil Service Department of the Town has reassigned me, so I have other duties that I've been focusing on, which is part of the reason why this has only gotten out today. And I apologize, Jude, to that. But nonetheless, I think there's a couple of basic issues that need to be discussed by the Board before really the applicant puts too much effort going forward.
Yep, okay.
So if you take my comments and you look at, I'll get to the part of the matter, number three in my comments.
Are they in the packet, Bill, or are they separate?
They're in the packet. Should be at the end of the big binder clip section.
Yep.
On the back. Throw mine up.
Is it up on the screen now?
Yes, number three, it's up here if anybody wants to look at the screen.
Go ahead, yep.
Okay. So the regulation says, "To qualify for consideration as a residential compound, the subdivision must satisfy all of the following conditions, provided however that satisfaction of the following conditions shall only result in rendering the plan eligible for further consideration by the Board pursuant to this section, and does not guarantee approval, not more than one residential subdivision plan shall be created from a property or a set of contiguous properties held in common ownership as of May 26, 2009. Documentation to this effect shall be submitted to the Planning Board along with the application of residential compound plan approval." So if you could go back, Kevin, for a second to that figure. Yeah, that one. So there's actually three different owners on four different parcels. So parcel 109-1 is Robert and Christine Chapman, 109-2 is Joseph and Megan Schleschman, and the remaining two are Cooperstown Road Realty Trust. So I think the Board should discuss that issue first and see what they want to do.
That's a great point of using the residential.
Correct.
Compound, right?
Yes.
What are you gonna do?
Bill, isn't this something, you know, I emailed you about regarding the compound and the difference between that, and there was another one, residential compound and...
...private.
Yeah.
What was that? The, the ones we were comparing last, one was a conventional subdivision with waivers.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just saying, because we've got like conventional subdivision with waivers and hammerhead lots and stuff like that, residential compounds, and then the other one was, escaped me what the other one was.
The only two. So you have two types. You have residential compounds or you have a conventional subdivision with waivers. And in either case, I don't believe you can do hammer lot, hammerhead lots on the new road. It has to be on an existing road.
Existing road.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, so the, you know, I think, you know, if you want to, can also give these guys time to respond, too, because in all fairness, they only got this comment today.
Yeah.
Yeah. I take hammerhead comment first before going through.
That's why I'm bringing it up first.
Put a lot of time into this, let's get that all figured out. Then we can go ahead and go from that point.
You know, so there's that question, and the other major issue that I see going on in this submittal, and I'm just gonna boil it down in a very simple way. The, although this is a residential compound, they still have to comply with the other requirements of the definitive subdivision process. So for example, monuments, road grades, you know, features such as that that are elsewhere in the defense, if they trigger stormwater. In this case, I think they do, you know, so there's a lot of those things that really were not even addressed in the application. If they're looking to request waivers for those things, they certainly can. They only request the two waivers.
We could, our other board member.
She's on. She's on.
Where in the hell?
Yeah, I don't worry about that.
Yeah.
Where, yes, my question, where?
So Bill and I had an exchange this week, and it wasn't related to this project, so I'm kind of surprised it's on there. It was just talking about residential compounds, and I think one of my comments was that you can go with their lots and stuff like that. And I think when we had previous discussions about our bylaw related to residential compounds was the fact that it was, you know, three acre lots, and, you know, instead of like a reduced type of flexible, you know, flexible development, where you could say, okay, what can you do with a defined plan, which I think the whole related to stormwater management, monuments and stuff like that, what can, how many lots can you put in there with a standard subdivision, and then what's the benefit of doing a flexible or kind of residential compound but with a reduced lot size but more open space? You know, that was our previous conversations related to that bylaw. I don't think, we never picked it up to change it.
Right.
But just want to recap to the board members some of the thoughts that we've had in the past, because I think one of the concerns was, you know, you're gonna have three acre lots in here, you know, ten house lots in this private drive supporting ten house homes and on a private way. So some challenges there.
Yeah, definitely.
You know, because, you know, the town's not gonna maintain that, so.
Nope. It can't be just a dirt road, dirt cop out going in, it's gotta be something that...
Well, you're making three lots here.
Nope.
You know, there's a question on the number of lots, too. Kevin, if you could call up that map again. So, so the engineer is presenting it as two existing lots on one, houses on lots 1 and 2, two new ones on lots 3 and 4. But if you look at parcel A, that's actually got enough area and frontage to be another lot, and potentially if they reconfigure things, that parcel D, C, and B, you know, they could reconfigure that to get at least another lot there, too. So.
What other different subdivision?
That could be in A, in our plan, or...
Yeah. The frontage is on Northwest Main, so.
But, but the point is, you know, this is more than just 2 and 2. And that's why I talked about the stormwater, it might trigger stormwater now, it isn't that.
Especially where, I know right where this is, I mean...
This is the slopes downward of the road?
It slopes down, and you have the other road going down the lane almost directly across from the driveway.
That's, that's partly where these other subdivision rights come into effect. One of the things I'm concerned about is the offset. We have a regulation in our subdivision requirements that says you can't have an opposing street less than 125 feet away, and they are less than 125 feet, so ledge stones, yeah.
Oh, ledge stone on the other side of the road.
So, so again, that, maybe you'll grant a waiver, but that needs to be dealt with.
Okay, no, Bill, I agree.
And don't get me wrong, we're not talking, I mean, neither of these are high traffic areas, but in the mornings, I mean, I drive the road every day, there are cars coming out of the hole all the time.
That road's a pretty well-traveled road, because...
Which one? Northwestern?
Northwest.
Yeah, that is. I'm saying ledge stone on the driveway here is it.
Yep. How far up Northwest Main is this?
700.
I know the number, I saw the number, but where?
Not quite to the town line, it's before the town line.
Yep. Sure you go down the big hill.
Halfway before, you know where...
Hidden Sutton?
Huh?
That town line?
Yes. Better on town, yeah.
By the words, it's...
How do the, where do you find?
Isn't it...
So way past your street, was it Oak Street?
Yeah, you're more than halfway down that road.
It's close to the old cemetery that's on that road. There's an old cemetery on the right side.
Yeah, before.
Yeah.
All right, Bill, anything else?
I mean, I have letter, comments in the letter, but I think they can take the time to take a look at that.
So that's what I'm gonna ask the engineer, if he would like time to respond to the comments from our engineer and comments that we've made tonight here at the hearing. Clearly, there's some issues that have to be addressed before you can move forward on it.
Am I, am I hearing that we have to comply with the subdivision rules and regulations for, for what, the storm, it doesn't trigger stormwater because it's four lots, so it doesn't trigger the Massachusetts stormwater? It's not, it's not considered a road, it's considered a driveway, so I don't know if the offset from ledge stone would work, would matter. It's not 10 lots, it's four lots, so there's only four lots being served out for this. It's not a huge impact on trap.
Go ahead.
If you're supporting more than one residence, you got more than, it's a road.
It, it's a road. It's a, this is a filing for two things. It's a definitive subdivision filing and a residential compound filing. So the, let me explain it this way. Residential compounds are a subsection within the definitive subdivision regulations. Okay? So, for example, it says the right-of-way width can be 30 feet. Elsewhere in the definitive subdivision regs, it says minimum of 60 feet. Now, obviously, they're in compliance by complying with 30-foot right-of-way width in that subsection. However, there's nothing in there about, and I'll use this as an example, concrete bounds for, okay, monumentation. The, the subsection of residential compound doesn't say anything about that. So where it's addressed in the definitive plan stands.
Okay. And it's important because we've, as a board, have had issues even with standard subdivision with monuments, even with private, you know, residential compounds with monuments.
Yes.
So, you know, it's a very important thing for people to know where their markers are. To your point, if they did a concept of a subdivision plan, then that can be a baseline of, here's what could be developed here, and here's what we're asking for, showing that delta. We, we have people do that with flexible development plans, right?
Well, that's a requirement of flexible, flexible development, and I think actually they did something along those lines when they first came in, like a year or two ago. I think they did that. It's, it's on that webpage.
Okay.
Yeah. And there's still Section 4.3.2E that has to be addressed.
That's, that's the, that's the biggie.
That's the biggie.
Once that gets addressed, then, then there's other issues that are out there. That's the three owners versus one owner. Yeah.
So how does that, how does the applicant address that?
Well, they, they just got it, so I would say let them digest it and respond.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, we'll take questions in a minute.
I do also want to point out, and I was asked repeatedly, make sure you're aware that the abbot has sent me an email, and he's got a list of comments. It's, it's an email, it says Hawk Hill Farms Residential.
That's one of the abbot's?
Yeah, he didn't know if he'd be able to...
Well, they're, they're, we don't know who they are.
We, we have a relationship to this, is this an applet property?
This is actually a landlocked parcel, so if you're looking at the map...
Oop, I'm gonna go back to the map.
Sure. Okay, he's somewhere in this vicinity.
Okay, all right, yeah, yeah.
And...
All right. And right now, does he have access to it?
I don't know the answer. That's the email. You know if he does?
Yeah.
He does?
No.
There are, there are landlocked parcels that don't have access.
Yeah, it has to be written in his deed.
I did look for that, and he, I did see he didn't have access.
It probably wasn't done back, back in the day, anyway.
Right.
Yeah, I don't like the idea, if we're gonna approve subdivisions, that there's landlocked parcels that, they stay landlocked, there should be access to those landlocked parcels. I don't like creating parcels of the landlocked land.
There needs to be some resolve, you're suggesting.
Shouldn't be that way.
Or accommodation.
Yes, there should be accommodations, so land that is landlocked. Insement.
Yeah, in the past, Planning Board has, has always made like a 50-foot access stretch for any future. And I think the only thing that the town, the town hasn't done is have those transferred via to the town over right-of-way or something like that, to the town, because we've had to go in the, you know, in the past, go after those via tax titles to claim those pieces such as the ones up on Brookside.
Right.
So, you know, that should be one of the things, if we have those access strips to be able to transfer to the town, so it's, it's a, you know, a way of access in the future, not, not held in a developer, developers' hands, and then...
Yeah, they'll be the gatekeeper.
Correct, yeah. More profit from the town.
Yes, no.
This is, this is a private way, this isn't a protected way.
Correct, yes.
Well, how would providing access to an abbot who's landlocked, I'm not, I'm not clear on what you're trying to say.
Who's landlocked?
I think that's one of the concerns that the abbot had raised in his email.
Yeah.
Well, I just tried to read more on the screen. Isn't that April 13?
Well, the way he's, yes, it is. The way, the way he listed is he wants to be sure that he retains access to his property, which to me implies that he has some sort of access, so I'm not sure how that is.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I'm not even, what parcel is he, because they own all these that access the road, so we wouldn't be landlocking him at all.
So...
I'm trying to read the letter, and forgive me, but it's very small, and this is the first time I've seen this letter.
Oh, did it post it on our website, Bill?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll email it.
Trying to see if I can pull it up.
Can I say something?
Yes.
It's Tracy?
Yep, go ahead, Trace.
So, are we talking about addressing the very first one, like you said, Ernie, to qualify for consideration, and even in the beginning here, before they go through all of these, the list of things that are not met? Are we gonna vote on the satisfaction of that condition? Or, because kind of, I think we kind of need to do that before they move forward, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see us voting on anything tonight, we just opened the public hearing tonight, and...
Well, we first have to decide, since it doesn't need regulatory requirement.
Right.
It's because...
With common ownership, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Do they qualify for this type of application, or should they go in a different direction?
Doesn't it have to take, uh, common ownership? Right?
Right.
So, Cooper, the Schleschmanns own Cooper's Realty, the Realty Trust, which I, again, I didn't see, it was the first one that you submitted, that you showed on the letter, but they have common ownership of those, and it's a co-application with the Chapmans, so it would all be under the same contiguous ownership.
Are the Chapmans and the Schleschmanns Cooper's Town Road Realty Trust as a common owner?
The Schleschmanns own the Cooper Realty, Cooper Town Realty Trust, and they control that property as well as their land, their house, and then the co-applicant is the chap.
So, so this is my point, where let, let them have an opportunity to respond to the comment, and then, you know, we can assess the response. So it, it says that, you know, I want to point out that it says that it has to be held in common as of May 26, 2009.
Wow.
And, and they have to document that.
So even if they put a limited partnership together, a real estate partnership, it's had been by 2009?
These are three separate owners, from my perspective.
Yeah, that's the way I'm looking at it, too.
So I think we just need to pause there and wait for their response.
Right, I agree.
Going through each item on the plan with the landlock and the drainage and the stormwater and the number of lots.
Yep.
I agree.
I agree.
We'll resolve that, we all agree, yeah.
Yep.
There you go. Should we hear it on the screen?
I keep with Bill's request from the Town Administrator to keep things, um, simple and straightforward.
That's what I, that's why I was asking the engineer, the applicant that's presenting it, if they want us to continue the public hearing to the next meeting and give you a time to respond to the comments from our engineer?
Yeah, I'd love to review them and figure them out.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I believe you had a question. Can you have your name and address, please?
Sure, my name is Nige Schleschmann. I am the first owner of Cooper Realty Trust and also 770 Northwest Main Street. My only question would be, what other provisions have been made to residential compounds in Douglas in the past in terms of ownership by one continuous party? Are there other residential compounds in place in Douglas that you voted on similar things?
Furno, Cosma.
Yeah, their families, individual families that take their lands and they do something with it.
Cosma on Maple Street.
Yeah, Cosma on Maple Street.
South East Main. South East Main.
Yep.
What about Cardinal, is that one?
He's asked if there was separate ownership, right?
No, 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 yeah, we're just talking about, those are common ownership, all common.
I think she's asking if it's, if there's been exemptions or there's been some.
That, that's what she's asking.
Right, and there hasn't, they're coming up with.
Yeah, we're just not doing that one.
Right.
Yeah, they've all been family.
So can you just tell me the definition of common ownership? Like what is, what does that mean?
If you remember, if somebody, if your family...
Well, I, I would say, let's see what they come up with for their response, and then we'll take, have time to think about it and respond. I don't want to have the Board put on the spot.
No, no, no.
Nope. But a group can always do a subdivision, right? If you get together, partnership and do a subdivision for us, right?
It's, the date, the date is the tough thing. You know, I mean, it's gotta be by May 26, 2009.
No, but I mean, to do something different, I'm trying to understand that. If they all get together and they put a limited partnership together, and it's called whatever Realty Trust, they can come back to us with a full subdivision, right, of some sort.
It says, "Set of contiguous properties held in common ownership as of May 26, 2009." So on May 30, 2009, it's a no-go.
Yeah, for residential compound, I'm saying something else, right?
If it's a pier or a...
But?
So Aaron's point, they could do something other than a compound.
Oh, yes.
Yes, they can, yes.
I didn't get that.
They can. Do a professional group, get together and do a real subdivision, you know, they can do whatever you want to call it.
Yes.
Do it all. Right, I mean, it's, it's not a...
Definitely.
Something can happen, it's just...
Correct.
Under this, what you're saying is difficult because...
They may be able to do a common driveway also.
Common driveway.
I mean, they seem to have frontage, ample frontage on Northwest Main Street. I don't know.
Right. They could do a private subdivision.
Yeah.
But, you know, let's not redesign it.
Yep, okay, let's, let them, let them respond. Let's, yeah, let's move on.
Yeah.
All right, so would you like to be continued to the next public, next...
Yeah.
Is there anybody, uh...
We gotta talk about one, one of our meetings.
Anybody else online? Yeah, Ernie, you have to, this might be, so you have to, you have to, people that are online there are like out here, but they're, so whoever...
Is there anybody else online that wants to ask a question?
Z and T, Theresa and Aziz, was that? Are they not hearing us? What about Lori? What about Lori?
Any response?
No.
Any response, Kevin, from anybody, no?
Uh, I don't see anything up on chat, but I think, I don't see anybody in the cameras that are raising their hands.
You have to like ask them.
So no, no questions from the audience?
Nope, no questions from the audience.
Jude, thank you.
No questions.
Huh? All right, our next meeting bell, what do you think?
Well, we can't do Tuesday nights.
No, so...
Is that May, May 26, 2009 date, is that hard set, is there a possibility of getting a waiver on that for them?
This was a bylaw section that I think I'm even...
I'm looking to see what it is.
That's the date that the bylaw came into effect.
Also a little hand.
At the time when they, when they created it, they, they said anything?
I don't have a hand icon on it. No, this is Devia.
But they have like a little hand you can raise to the person they drafted.
Hello?
Can we, is someone, is someone on?
Yep.
Question?
Hello, this is Karen Stark.
Yeah, she's right.
Okay. Do you have a question about this, about this?
Scroll, Kevin, that thing.
Yeah, she's right here.
I think Karen's on next on the agenda.
Okay.
Is that right, Karen?
Yes.
Oh, it's, yes, this is for William Stark.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not, we're not there yet.
Yep. Um, so Bill, we wanted to leave it open ended for our next meeting.
All right, Bill, what, what is, what is your comment about our meetings?
Yeah, let's try it out. So we can't do Tuesdays, which is our regular meeting.
Yep, okay.
I know there's a couple of Thursdays that school committee has taken this room.
Okay.
Do Wednesday?
Wednesday, the first Wednesday of the month's no good, that's the sixth, because I know ZBAs and you could try for like the 30th, the 20th, or the 27th. If you want to do two weeks, it'd be the third. Of May.
So we need...
Rather than the 12th.
And if that's problematic, I'll...
Notify.
Yeah, yeah, just notify.
I'll notify and we'll, we'll have to postpone again.
That's the Thursday.
Excuse me.
We can only have one meeting at a time, so sometimes the other boards occupy the room, so.
Okay.
That's Wednesday.
Go ahead, Mike.
All right, so everybody, you're changing 5:12 to what?
5:13.
The agenda calls out, says next meeting's 5:12. Yeah, we're changing it to...
I, I asked, I asked that there be, I asked that...
What?
I asked that there be an agenda item to discuss calendar dates for meetings, but I don't see it on there.
Yeah.
Oh. So do we just take these?
Don't worry about those.
Yeah, don't worry about the agenda. The agenda's gonna change.
I'm going to the casino that night.
Huh?
Yes.
All right, so we need a motion to continue the public hearing for Cooper's Town Road Realty Trust for 768 and 772 Northwest Main Street to 7:00.
7:00.
On May 3, on Wednesday, May 13.
Motion made by Mike, seconded by Aaron. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, so the 13th?
Yep.
At 7 o'clock. All right. Thank you, everybody.
Oh, I mean, that's the thing, the engineers have to like got that out and lawyers and all that stuff, we all get it. All right, so that's that one, that.
All right, next item on the agenda. My glasses just fogged up again.
It's really hard to understand you, by the way. Speaking through that.
Yeah, no, no. All right, public hearing. William Stark, application for an accessory apartment special permit, 12 Parker Road, possible vote. Let me read the, uh... Okay. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, and the Town of Douglas accessory apartment zoning by law, Section 3.3 and 9.3, Douglas Planning Board is holding a public hearing on the application of William Stark for an accessory apartment special permit. Property location is 12 Parker Road, Assessors Map 121, Parcel 2, Douglas, Mass. Public hearing is being held on Tuesday, March 24, 2020, at 7:30 PM in the community meeting room, Municipal Center, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. A copy of the application may be viewed in the Community Development Department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. Ernest Marks, Chairman, Douglas Planning Board, public hearing is now open.
This is Stark. Yep, you're up.
Hello?
Hello.
Yeah, hello.
Yes, you're up.
Okay, how can I help you?
That's all you want to do. Who, who are you?
Did you submit the plans?
Yeah.
Right, okay, you have the plans there and we're just looking for an in-law apartment granted, uh...
Can you state your name? Can you state your name?
I'm sorry. Yeah, this is William Stark.
You want the project drawings up, Bill?
Sure. Thank you.
Has he got a picture there?
Yeah.
Uh, he's in audio only.
Okay.
You guys have video?
Yep. Connection, somebody's on our computer.
Are, are you using your Chrome browser?
You said someone's on there. No, we're not. So what, what we're viewing right now is, is the house plans that you submitted in, can you just go give us an overview of what your building and what your square footage is of the in-law?
Yep, we're looking to just, we're looking to exceed the town, the, the exception 900 by law, we're looking to exceed the 1200 instead of 900. And we're looking to exceed the, instead of the 50 feet, it would just be 150 feet. From the existing building.
Okay, so, so it's a detached structure?
Detached.
Okay. Detached.
Okay.
This, this whole, what we're seeing is a new structure.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
So Kevin, can you select locust map of the site of the town? Okay, so this is the existing house.
Yep.
It's on Parker Road.
Yep.
If you scroll down or zoom in and it kind of shows the area in terms of the way. So he, that, that northerly or top property line is 400 some odd feet. They're looking to locate the structure, I'm not sure where on this lot, we don't have a plan view showing where the proposed structure is. But, but they're looking for 150 feet away, the regulation is 50 feet, no more than 50 feet.
Yep.
Looking for 150 feet and then they're looking to increase dimensionally the square footage from 900 to 1200, Mr. Stark?
Yes.
And the reason, reason for the extension on the 150 feet is there's a garage in between and so if there wasn't a garage, we could certainly do the 50 feet, but there is a garage in between, so that's why we just need the extra 100 feet.
So, so we're looking at a map of your property, can you kind of verbally describe where on the site the, the proposed building is?
Yeah, on the picture, as we were looking at the computer, it would be the top left-hand side, you have the house and you have the round garage.
Okay.
And then it would be on the other side, round garage.
All right.
And, and also, we don't have any neighbors for like a, almost a quarter of a mile, sometimes half a mile on this.
So that, that's not a pool, it's a garage?
Yeah, I thought it was a pool, sorry. So did I.
That's a garage? Really?
Yeah.
It's a garage.
So how does that tie with this?
That, that, that's the first picture, that's the overview, that's the, that's the parcel location.
Don't we need a location proposed? We can't be...
Oh, I mean, yeah, first of all, it's 1200 feet, square feet as opposed to 9.
And it's 150.
And it's, I mean, that's two houses on the same lot.
Yeah.
So can I say one thing?
Please. Sorry.
Um, what is the planning for the septic system?
Yeah.
And all that.
Well, yeah.
Let's, let's put it to Stark.
Yeah.
And what about, I thought...
That was your question, Tracy? Tracy, was that your question?
Yes.
The septic system, and I don't believe that this is staying true with the intent of the bylaw, um, and I don't see why this structure could not be located somewhere else and maybe downsized a little bit if something's in the way. Um, it should be tying into the existing system on the site as to not create two principal structures on one lot.
Correct.
Correct.
I agree.
Yeah. I think that's what we've had in the past with those applicants, that they would share the same sewage.
And not only that, wasn't it supposed to be the 50 feet so that they could do same utilities, one meter?
Yep.
The main house would have the meter?
Yep.
And then that would be the secondary house, it's all being run off the main house?
Mm-hmm.
They can't, they can meter and power source and all that going to the second dwelling?
No, you're right.
Yep. Did you hear that comment, Mr. Stark?
No, no, I did, a lot of people are talking over each other and it's hard to hear on the same.
Okay, first, first of all, your septic system, it has to be the same septic system that you are currently using, the utilities have to be... We have no design for that, so we don't know what that is.
Ernie.
All right, you have to be on the same meter.
Same, same sewer system, sir. You have to share the same utility.
That's what he's saying, that he, he plans it.
You also need to show it on, you need to show the location of the proposed on your plan, which is supposed to be no more than 50 feet away, which is what the bylaw is. So, and you're asking for a waiver in the square footage, which is 900 feet to 1200 feet. So those have to be addressed.
Ernie.
Well, the 150 too.
Yeah.
On the property except, the only reason we need the extra footage is so we can put it on the other side of our existing garage. Otherwise, on, on the property, there's really not a good spot for it. You, you need to show it on a plan anyway, we can't assess something we can't see. So...
Did you put a plan?
Yeah, you gave us a list of what we need for the meeting, we gave everything and I checked the checklist. Including the plan through the actual, like the blueprint of the house.
No, well, you have elevations of a house and a plan of a house, of a brand-new house that's over the required 900. And it's, we don't have a plot plan or a, a plan that shows your proposed location.
That wasn't, uh, absent on that checklist, I'm sorry, that's a real, but, but if I, if I knew that, I would have applied that.
It's part of parcel, any development.
Yeah, it, it, yeah, it's, it's probably, you know, it's, it's gonna be part of your building package anyway, so you're gonna have to show where you're tying into the existing septic system. We just require it to, to show where the two dwellings are and how those gonna coexist. You know what I mean? And, and the setbacks related to where the new structure's gonna be. We don't know if you're, if you're approaching, you know, approaching on a setback with a deck or something like that with the new structure, so that's, that's why.
No, the, the, the existing property around our property line, we own there. You need to show us what you want to show us, because this is a monumental project, this is building a brand-new house on your property and we need to make an assessment of that, so you need to see where it's gonna be located, what your proposal is, and you're gonna need some waivers from this board. So we want to help, we just want to help you help yourself, you know? Yeah, yeah, so you need, you need a, like a plot plan?
Yeah, yeah.
Location of the proposed.
Yeah, I think something, what, what's required in, in the bylaw is that you have to demonstrate and satisfy the board that this has the appearance of a single-family house and not two houses on one lot.
Yeah, well, you won't, you won't even be able to see the house actually.
No, it, it, we, we, we can't, yeah, we can't worry about what happens in the future if someone comes through and cuts down a bunch of trees, you know, in the future and buys a parcel next to you. We, we need to see it on a plan related to the requirements of the setbacks and offsets and how it's gonna be located on the property, whether there's trees around you or, you know, stone walls, we still have to see it, so we know that you're not impacting, uh, any future, you know, properties around you and, and where it sits on the property. So, and we need to know that it's gonna tie into the existing septic system, so that has to be clear where that is on a, on a plan.
Where the ground is better compacted, it would be downhill, you know, you could be on 50 feet downhill.
So...
So we have a next meeting, we can...
Yep.
Another thing I'm bringing up is you understand, you can't run separate utilities to this house.
You're saying that the, 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 the detached apartment has to be running off of the same electricity system, the same septic and everything like that, correct?
Yes.
With, with no additional meter?
Yep.
You could do an eager beaver.
Yeah, we, we can, we can meet that criteria.
Okay. I mean...
Take them back for the next meeting, so I'll continue.
Yeah, you, you understand you, you've got some work to do on this project before we'll approve this, I mean...
Yeah. We're, we're understanding that.
Okay. I, I suggest you...
We're allowing, we're allowing them to call, but you're asking for a lot on this.
All right, would you like us to continue to another meeting and then you can, you understand what, you know, I mean, there's, we can't do anything with this, it doesn't meet any regs.
Exactly where the building's gonna be situated.
Correct. Yep, where the proposed structure's gonna go.
Should we discuss the waivers at all first, so give them some advice going forward if maybe the board's not...
How many are they asking for, Jake?
Well, they're, they're asking for two, 1200 square feet.
Yeah.
And the 150.
Yeah.
If the board doesn't want to do that...
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
I would be strongly recommending to keep it at the 50 feet.
Yeah, I would too.
Yep.
That's tripling the distance.
I would not be inclined to grant that waiver.
Right, I don't, yeah, I wouldn't recommend granting either waiver.
This is the spirit of what it is. No other town has it, we have that I know of.
Yeah, you gotta come, you gotta come a little bit more into compliance with the rules and regulations for, for an accessory apartment, you're asking for way too much than we'll be willing to give, I believe, at this point.
Or, or that we haven't given.
What's the square footage of the existing house?
Yeah, we thought that, you know, because we do own all of the property all around the whole area, I'm talking, you know, we're on like a 98 parcel here, I, I, we were just figuring that, you know, that would be able to be waived because we have no neighbors that, you know, that would be able to be waived, because we have no neighbors and, you know, we're not selling our land.
That seems like the wrong process.
Yeah, that doesn't matter. You're doing it within the confines of the parcel you're on right now. That's all we look at, we're not looking at...
How much land?
Land. You have to meet the rules, you have to meet the rules and regulations for that parcel. It doesn't matter if you want all the land around it or not.
I mean, they could come back with a family compound, right? They have all this land, right? But, you know, they, one family owns all of it.
They can do whatever they want, but they can't, they can do whatever they want if they come back with the rules and regulations.
And then they could put this house 300 feet away.
Yeah, they can't, you can't do this. This is too much to ask for, for a one lot.
Yeah.
So, you'll have to reconfigure it and come into compliance with the rules and regulations a little bit more. We can continue to the next meeting if you'd like.
Yeah, we'd like to do that.
Okay.
How long do you want on Google?
30.
So, you're gonna need a, alright, just so you can see it on a map on where we're looking to put it.
Yeah, but are you also understanding that we're not likely to approve anything more than 50 feet away? This is sort of an opinion of folks here. So, take that into consideration when you're looking at it again.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, you're telling me that basically nobody gets a variance?
Oh, this is a waiver. A variance would be the ZBA board. The 50-foot separation was put in place to ensure that the septic system would be a shared septic system, be able to tie into, as well as the utilities with wells and stuff like that. So, that's why, that's why, that's why it was put together. I don't, in the past that I can recall, I don't recall the board ever granting a in-law setup with 100, over 50-foot separation, maybe 60 max, but nothing that I can recall that has been over 100 feet. And then the square footage, I think the highest that we've ever gone up to is maybe 1,000, and that's about it. So, just things to take into consideration, because, you know, what you're asking for is, I think, above and beyond what the board has previously passed. So...
I appreciate that.
Yep, okay, okay. Bill, time?
7:30 on May 13.
Does anybody have any comments on that?
Yep.
I don't know.
Anyone else?
Pull it up there.
Is anyone that's listening in right now have any questions or comments on this project?
Uh, no, no, it's done, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, alright, somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion then, to continue the public hearing for William Stark at 12 Parker Road to 7:30 on Wednesday, May 13.
Second.
Motion made by Mike Z, seconded by Mike G. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries. Thank you, everybody.
I wanna build a castle.
Phil, do we know the towns that have detached in-laws?
Phil is very few.
Very few, but even in-laws themselves. I don't believe Oxbridge allows in-laws whatsoever.
I don't know.
They do. Is the solar farm coming in tonight?
Yeah, attached and detached.
Then Sutton does allow them. I know one of the two...
Sutton doesn't, but when my wife and I were looking for a house, Oxbridge, there's one on Dunleavy Brook that has a detached in-law.
Oh, they're okay with that?
Yep, okay.
I do, Oxbridge. Oxbridge allows them, Sutton doesn't, yeah. It's, every town's different, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
We headed to...
This one, Bill?
A little behind.
Uh, I can't see that far. It should say 45 Oak Street halfway down.
Yeah.
What's happening with the cooler?
Yep, okay, got it. Alright, moving on. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, BWC Whitein Reservoir LLC, CO Blue Wave Solar, application for a public shade tree permit, application for site plan review permit, application for a scenic road permit at 45 Oak Street. And part of this public hearing is a new application for a shade tree, right? In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 87, Public Shade Tree Law, Section 3, Cutting a Public Shade Tree, Hearing Damages, Town of Douglas zoning bylaws, Section 9.4 for Site Plan Review, Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 15C, and the Town of Douglas general bylaws, Article 5, Section 6 for Scenic Roads. Douglas Planning Board and the Tree Warden are jointly holding a public hearing on the application for BWC Whitein Reservoir LLC, CO Blue Wave Solar applicant, and Susan Mazinski owner, for a permit that consists of constructing a plus or minus 3.9 megawatt DC ground-mounted photovoltaic energy system within a plus or minus 40.96 acre property zoned as rural agricultural. Also, the applicant is seeking a scenic road permit to expand an existing opening within the stone wall and for the removal of approximately five trees within a scenic road right-of-way. The site is located at 45 Oak Street, assesses map 132 parcel 5, as shown on a plan prepared for BWC Whitein Reservoir LLC, CO Blue Wave Solar, entitled Oak Street Solar, 45 Oak Street, Douglas, Mass. By Beals &amp; Thomas Inc., Civil Engineering and Landscape Architect, 144 Turnpike Road, South Borough, Mass., dated January 31, 2020, in Survea, how do you say that, Bill? S-P-A-T-I, Spatell? Spatell?
Spatial.
Spatial data and design, 90 Main Street, Milbury, Mass. Public hearing is being held on Tuesday, March 24, 7:00 PM, in the community meeting room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Copy of the application may be viewed in the community meeting, Community Development Department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. Ernest Marks Chairman, public hearing is now open.
Mr. Chairman, I recuse myself, because I'm...
Okay, let the record show that Mike Zerker is recusing himself.
So, Mr. Chairman, may I ask you a question? This is our third meeting with this group?
I believe so.
Right, and the first meeting, we asked if they would engage the selectmen in a pilot program. I wanna ask if that's been done? Is the applicant here?
Yeah, so, this is Jeff Murphy here with Beals &amp; Thomas, also on the call, Matt Harlon with Blue Wave, as well as Jackie Kirsty. And I'll let them, I guess, speak to the pilot program, but I think it would probably be best, if possible, to just go into the scenic road portion of the discussion, just because that's kind of a self-contained discussion.
I'd like to put the smoke before the mirrors, so... Can we have an indication, my jacket's stuck. Can we have an indication on that, though?
Yes, this is Matt Harlon from Blue Wave speaking. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yep.
Yep.
Hi, everyone, thank you for hearing us tonight. Yeah, so typically, we engage with the board of selectmen for the calculation of a pilot amount. Once the project is sort of completed its initial permitting, so we have to have an understanding of the size. However, I understand there is a town meeting coming up in the near future, once that date's been set. We are happy to sort of go through the process of putting a item on the warrant so that the board of selectmen can be granted the authority to engage in a pilot. As we understand, that's typically the first step they like to take.
The warrants, we haven't even opened the warrant. So, the town meeting date is to be determined, which potentially could be in September.
Yep.
And to enter into a pilot agreement, that doesn't need to go to town meeting.
You have that authority already?
We have that authority under town bylaw. That can come directly to us.
Yep.
Did you hear that? Applicant?
I did, yes.
Okay.
So, they have the authority.
Rather than 511.
So, two months ago, whatever, we're asking if you would enter it.
That date is, oh, very...
Into a pilot program where maybe there's a sliding scale, but at least some understanding between the applicant and the board of selectmen. Right?
Yeah, we'd be happy to put a form document in front of the board of selectmen.
Right, and that would be a credential for, what's it called, criteria for us approving that, this project, which is what is happening.
So, you're saying, Aaron, it would be a condition in the decision?
A condition, isn't that what's happened with our other, all our other applicants before?
At the request of the applicants, we did put a condition in...
Sure.
Asking that, you know, they be required to enter into a pilot agreement.
Right, and that's a favorable partnership for all involved, I think.
So, we absolutely agree, and pilots are definitely our preferred mode of operation as well. And I apologize for the time delay, it was likely a misunderstanding on our part. My assumption was that this would be included as a condition of the permit and completed.
So, are you asking, so are you asking that that be included as a condition for our permit?
Yeah, we have no problem having a...
No, you're asking for that, correct?
Awesome.
Yeah, the applicant has to request that.
Yep, okay.
In writing as well.
Yeah.
Behind, yeah. That's great.
Okay, you're in agreement with that, then?
Matt said that, right?
Okay.
Yes, he did.
Alright, thank you. Alright, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, you're presenting the shade tree, Jeff, part of it?
Murphy.
Yeah, I was hoping that Kevin might be able to share some plans just up on the screen, so I can kind of speak to that plan we prepared for the scenic road impacts.
Okay.
Hold on one second.
Yeah, there's a lot of plans there.
Yep, so the fifth item down is entitled Scenic Road Plan. If you could browse to that.
Yep. Is this the one?
This one?
That's the first picture?
I don't know.
Yeah, come on.
Yeah, it looks like that.
There it is.
There you go, cool.
Sorry about that.
Yep. Alright, cool. So, there we go.
Yeah, yeah, it's the one that says scenic road plan.
Yep.
So, we refiled our initial application for the scenic road permit, public shade tree permit, to coincide with the relocated entrance for the project closer to the home. So, we've shown the work within the public right-of-way here. We've got a kind of triangular-shaped area impact, which is that kind of hatched area. It's about a 550 square foot triangular-shaped area. We've identified approximately six public shade trees within the right-of-way that will be impacted by the project entrance there. So, we have a table there outlining those trees. The trees were identified in the field and marked with red and white flagging, and signs were posted on the trees that were large enough to have that legal ad notice placed on the tree. So, we had also provided photo documentation of that process being done. There's about a 50-foot section of the existing stone wall that would be impacted by the apron here, the larger turning apron for the driveway, and we're proposing to basically rebuild that existing stone wall along the side of the driveway as depicted on the plan.
Can you just make sure when you rebuild the stone wall that it doesn't exceed the height of the existing stone wall, so there doesn't create a blind drive or anything like that? You know what I mean? Yeah, that's all.
Yep, yep.
For the safety aspect?
Yep.
Being common practice, anyway.
Not always. Some people just stack them all up.
Yep, so the work within the scenic right-of-way is pretty minimal, and the majority of that triangular-shaped area is actually already kind of clear of vegetation. It's kind of just a grass shoulder, and then you've just got those couple trees right in front of the existing wall. There's some photos in the photo log, if any of the board members wants to see that. That's a thing that Kevin previously had pulled up, just showing some photos.
Yeah, I think most of those trees are the, oh, I see, they're the Canadian maple trees that the towns got all around, so they're pretty well rotted and outdated.
Tree warden has looked at them and he, I think he emailed you, but he has no concern.
The tree warden sent an email in saying that the trees that were marked, he had no issues with being...
Oh, good, yeah, yeah, I think they're, they've seen their better years. So, okay, good. Actually, we'll improve the sightline and safety.
They need a permit from us. What is this?
Okay.
So, there's three permits in front of you. It's a shade tree, it's a scenic road, and it's a site plan review.
Yeah, I'm okay with the scenic road aspect and the scenery.
That's certainly up to the board, yeah.
We'll preview it.
Well, I mean, you could do the shade tree and the scenic road, right?
Yes.
My only comment would be, you know, be cognizant of, you know, in the event that changes get made, now those hearings would be closed.
No, no, I think we keep everything open right now.
Yeah, I'm, we're gonna continue this, I would keep them all open.
Keep them all open at the same time.
Yep, I agree.
And then if something impacts something else, then just deal with it all at once.
Yeah.
Hey, Boyd, have any comments or questions on the...
I'm okay with the, I'm okay with the data that they've provided so far regarding the entryway and the trees.
I think we're pretty much in agreement that we're okay with that.
Yep.
With the shade tree.
What is a shade tree permit?
It would allow them to, it would allow them to remove the trees that have to be removed to construct the project, the right-of-way into it.
Trees over a certain diameter within the public right-of-way.
So, removal?
Yes, it's removable.
Removal.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, just moving it along.
Yep.
I know the Conservation Commission asked that they, well, through the applicant, asked that they be able to hire an outside consultant, an engineering firm, and I know Steve Zisk has sent out some requests for proposals to a number of firms.
Okay.
That's in process, and, you know, I've been tied up, as I mentioned.
Yep.
And normally, I would do that in-house, but, you know, other things have taken priority. The, you know, I would say that we utilize whatever results come through the Conservation Commission's peer review.
Okay.
However, what I was gonna recommend is that we utilize our 53G account to pay for that consultant.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that, yeah.
And then beyond that, I would say we might even expand the scope a little to include something like decommissioning estimates.
Okay.
Okay.
Did we already have something submitted by the applicant regarding decommission?
We did.
Okay.
Yep.
We haven't confirmed that yet, Pete, that's why you use that. The 53G, right, consulting, is in Conservation themselves, their board tied to that as well?
They do have the ability to utilize 53G, but they're not aware of any instance where they have. They use their wetland protection account.
Okay, okay, I just want clarification on that, that's why.
Yeah, this would fall under 53G more than under wetlands account.
Correct, yeah, and sometimes if Conservation has an access to 53G, then that would be the point to use it through versus through the planning boards one.
Yep.
Okay.
Alright, does the applicant have a problem, any problem with that?
I spoke with Jeff earlier, and he didn't seem to have an issue with that.
Okay, so you're on board with that? Okay.
Yep.
Alright, Bill, anything else?
I don't think so. Jeff, do you have anything else?
Yeah, so I did just wanna mention this to the board, so if Kevin, you could pull up again, we have submitted a revised plan set that's dated April 3, and we reissued those plans as a result of some comments, you know, with our discussions with the Conservation Commission. But when he pulls up the site plans there, one of the changes that we made was to the, we did some grading changes up on top of the hill in order to basically generate some earth cut, so that they could use that to build...
Jeff, what plan sheet are you looking at?
Yep, so if he goes to sheet C302.
Okay. B302?
C, is it C? C is in Charlie?
C, C.
C is in Charlie.
Oh, okay.
Yep, C-302.
Okay, there it is.
Looking for the page, it's 101. We got a way to go.
I think it's sheet 8 of the PDF set.
Page 8, okay, page 8.
Yeah, sorry, there's a lot of sheets.
That's page 8.
Yep, that's it, okay, yeah, that's the...
Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, okay, I'm not seeing it quite yet, but anyways, it's basically, they're just looking to regrade, we're just looking to regrade the top of the hill, which is currently kind of a ridge line. And by doing that, we're gonna generate some earthen cut that they'll be able to use that soil to construct the stormwater basin farms out of. So, essentially, that regrading on top of the hill is the only real change to the plan. Everything else is, as we've seen previously, all the basins are identical. So, again, it's just to reduce the import of material required to try to come up with a more balanced site. I mean, there's certain quantities that are gonna be imports regardless, like processed gravel for the ring roads and access roads. But the basin farms in particular, we're hoping to generate material from the site to use to build those. And, you know, we think this is gonna be beneficial also in terms of just, you know, it's gonna slow down the stormwater coming off the hill as well, because we're kind of flattening off the top of the hill there, so...
Jeff, so you're referencing kind of in the center page where you have these little mounds, you can tell with the lines going across that there's like a little mound going through. You're just basically talking about leveling those off a little bit to make the, where the solar landing is and the farm's gonna be, that would be a little more level, right, to those folks?
Correct, yeah, right now, it's kind of like a dome-top hill, and we're basically gonna kind of shave the top of that dome off, so that's what those kind of oval-shaped contours are depicting.
Yep.
Yep.
Contours get further apart, they get more level.
Yep.
Yep, so we're basically just lowering that, and that's underneath the panel area. This just shows it a little bit clearer without the panels turned on.
How many cubic yards, I mean, how many cubic yards you think you're moving? That sounds kind of old, but I'm just curious. That sounds kind of old, but I'm just curious.
Um, it's probably going to be in the vicinity of probably like 20,000, 15,000 to 20,000 cubic yards.
Okay.
So it's, just because of the, yep.
Is, is any of this material going offsite?
Yeah, that's my question.
No, the idea is to use that material to build the basin barms because all the basin barms are currently like designed as hill above grade just based on the groundwater conditions. All of our basin barms are kind of building up above the existing grades. So we need that material to kind of build those earthen barms.
You're satisfied it's going to meet the spec for the berm?
So, so we have specked an impervious core material for the berm so that the core of the berm is going to be a material that's going to be very impervious because we don't want any seepage getting through. But we may have, we'll likely have the material tested as well. I mean, the onsite material is kind of glacial till, so it may actually work really well as a core material itself, but it would have to meet the specs that we typically would have for that impervious core material.
What kind of area is that horizontally planned view area that you're shaving?
Yeah, the shape there. Give me a second. It is, pretty good size, I agree, yeah. Lengthwise, it's about, it's about seven, almost 800 feet lengthwise. And the width of it is probably about 250 feet.
So is this going to change, you know, your initial calculations for your stormwater was based off of the current topography and now you're changing the topography here. Are you going to be increasing the water flow into that basin that was initially going to be planned for that area? Does that have to be looked at to be increased size?
Yeah, so we actually submitted a revised stormwater report to the Concom along with these plans that's going to get reviewed by the peer review consultant. We did update the calculations because you're correct. But fortunately, what we're proposing actually makes the stormwater runoff better in terms of the numbers. It's going to lower the runoff slightly because we're taking that pitch out of the hill and we're flattening it off. So our kind of time of concentration flow path down to the basin becomes a little bit longer. So it actually is going to help the design a little bit, so give account for that.
Okay.
And I'm sure you're modeling it so that it's a, you know, vegetated surface and not, not just dirt.
Absolutely. Yeah, they're going to have to, they're going to have to put topsoil back down on that. And because for the dual use, we need that area under the panels to be vegetative and, you know, arable for crops. So we will need to put that topsoil layer back down.
Yeah, so for continuity, Jeff, please get me a copy of whatever you gave to the Concom.
Yep.
Any other questions, Bill?
No.
No?
Nope.
Hey, Jeff, anything else?
Any of Butters?
Yeah, any of Butters, people wishing to speak or ask questions on this project?
Neighbors?
I'm going to throw one out there.
Name and address?
Mike Swarker, 46 Oak Street. They're not showing, and I asked it from the very beginning, where you're doing the work, what kind of openings or driveways are across the street? Because the actual thing you're pointing in, there's a driveway, if I'm not mistaken, directly across from that opening. And you're not showing it on your print? Because I'm afraid any water coming out of there is going to run right down that driveway. And that's all downhill.
We didn't ask that last week. Show all.
I've been asking, but right along, to show what's across the street from anything that you're doing.
Yeah, so there, there is a house, there's that new house next to yours, Mike, that's direct, directly across from there. That's 50 Oak Street. We did add that driveway location on the plan.
Run driveway though. There's another driveway between Shirley's house and that one. Their house is tucked way down into the backside. All you see is a driveway. You don't see the house.
The west one.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. You're corrected, that driveway is not shown. One of the things that I will say is that on that section of Oak Street, it's pitching towards the south. And the road is also crowned such that water coming out of our driveway entrance is going to flow along the easterly gutter line of Oak Street and down towards, past the driveway for 45 Oak. It's going to stay on our side of the road, basically. So it shouldn't be an issue of going down anyone's driveway because of the crown of the road there.
I agree with you on some aspect of it, but now you're saying that the water's going to run down the road and there's no drainage ditch on that side of the road until you get past Susan's house. So that means that water's going to be sinking in the road because it has no place to go. Because all the, all the ground on that side of the road is higher than the road itself. And you know that.
So maybe some.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's kind of relatively flat there, right in front of Susan's house. It's kind of like a gravelly sandy pull-off there. I mean, it's fairly flat and then there's kind of grass areas in front of the garage. I mean, I don't think it's going to really be in any sort of an issue runoff wise.
I've heard that story before.
Maybe something to look at is when you're removing these, some trees that are marked out there, is, does that open the area for drainage ditch for some of the water that's in the road? You know what I mean?
There's no place to put it.
They're pretty close to a high point, no?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, are you at a high point there with the, at the driveway?
Yeah, you're at the high point of the street.
Where the driveway is currently located is just south of the, the high point on Oak Street is actually kind of right on that, that dangerous curve. So like, that's where the high point is and it's actually falling south past our driveway there. So the drainage patterns are going to kind of remain as is.
I'm not showing enough on here.
That was Shirley.
The only thing that, right now, there's no opening like you're putting in. You're putting in a paved opening and stuff. It's just watching out on how you design that to try to slow or stop any extra water getting on Oak Street. The road's narrow enough as it is and you get the big puddling or bonding in that area, especially in that corner, you're going to be in trouble.
If they were to crown the road coming in paved part, crown that and then put rip rap or gravel on either side.
Yeah.
I'm not, we're not designers, sorry.
I'm just stating the facts.
Yeah. And I think also with Mike's point there is if you, you know, if there's water coming off your driveway into the road, you could, in the winter, possibility, creating an ice dam or freezing and stuff like that, so.
You already have those issues on.
Yeah, that road always already has issues already.
You don't need more.
Don't need more.
Correct, so.
I would, I mean, you're going to have to go and get a driveway permit.
Right, so what we've done in the past is had the highway superintendent make a determination whether or not a culvert is required and/or any other drainage.
Okay, I'm sure we'll look at that aspect.
As you know, on Oak Street, there's three pillar slots of driveways on that side of the road. And in the winter time, it creates nothing but sheet ice where the town's always coming up and having the salt and sand, just those areas.
I'd drop it with tobacco too, so.
Yeah. Can you show that other driveway in there? Let's get all the driveways that are on the plan across.
Oh, you want, you want to see that other one? Yeah.
I mean, it's on, it's there for sure.
And we don't need a whole new plan set, Jeff, just that one sheet would be good.
Yeah.
Well, it shows up on multiple sheets though.
Oh, good layers.
And anyways, I think that's an easily fixable solution there. I think we could certainly do something like right in the front of like Susan's yard, like kind of where that little sandy pull-off is. I mean, I don't see why we couldn't just do some sort of a crushed stone like trench there just to kind of get the water to go into the, into the soil there versus letting it run along the street if that's a concern.
Well, put on the sides, crown the thing so you don't have that trench, all gravel coming out of the street. That's not what you were saying, was it? Have the paving continue to the street, but do the crown and get the water to go either side in some sort of crushed stone or something along the sides.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, good. Excellent.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, anything else?
Shirley?
No, I'm asking him if he has anything else first. Nothing else, Jeff?
Um, I don't have anything else at this time.
Okay. Nobody else from the project has anything else either?
None in the room?
None of the other people that are there?
Shirley Mazinski.
Yep, Shirley, we see you.
I'd like to say something.
Go ahead, Shirley.
Shirley Mazinski, 16th Street. I agree with Mike because even right now, not the driveway that goes down in, but the other of the new house, if you take a look at that back way, it's all eroding on one side of it. There is water running down that road. So it needs to be taken seriously because Mike's right, we have nothing but problems with driveways on, especially on that side of the road.
Okay, thank you, Shirley. Yeah, we'll look into it for sure. I'm sure John will take a look at it too when he goes up to do the permit for the driveway.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
All good.
Okay, Bill, you have some stuff to look over that they've submitted you haven't got to yet?
Yeah, they had submitted a response letter and I haven't had a chance to look at it.
Okay, so do you want us to continue to the next meeting or do you need more time?
Jeff?
Jeff, you want to, you want to be on the next meeting or do you want us to continue a couple of meetings ahead or?
I think it's the next meeting, the 13th, what's the date of it?
13th.
The 13th.
13th? Yeah, I think we do that. I think we continue to the 13th.
Okay.
I would agree.
Yep, okay.
You know, with, this meeting date may even change depending on if the.
Yes, right, yeah, yeah.
In a letter.
Okay, what time?
I'll say that one thing, get those dead trees out of that corner, it's good.
All right.
Maybe it'll be open by then.
Motion? With 8:00?
So, yeah, I'd say 8:00 would be good.
8:00?
You think it starts at half an hour?
We, it's first, oh, 7:45. Yeah. All right, I'll make a motion to continue the Blue Wave, uh, Blue Wave Solar on 45 Oak Street to May 13th, a Wednesday at 7:45.
Second.
Motion made by Les, seconded by Jake. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, abstain? Tracy?
Aye.
Aye, abstain.
Aye.
Aye, okay, one abstention from Mike.
Nice job.
All right, thank you. All right, so we'll see you on the 13th.
Did you see that?
Yeah.
Hey, Jeff, Jeff, nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, we'll see you on the 13th. Hopefully, hopefully here, but if not on TV.
All right, thanks.
Hey, good luck, stay healthy.
Okay, so next on the agenda, we have discussion items versus Subdivision removal rating and progress plan. I know Andy's here tonight. If you could click on that, Kevin. And if you click on the top link.
Existing conditions as built?
Yep.
Hold on. I just want to share the screen. I kind of bounced out of it, sorry.
I was wondering.
No.
Yeah, that's it.
This is it? All right, what we got, Bill? Sleepy Hollow?
Well, actually.
Can you give me your name and address, please? Just for the record.
I wanted one lucky deal.
Thank you, Andy.
You live there?
So the, the only thing really left to do was do the test pitch for the subdrain in a row.
Okay.
Travel the road.
This, this was for an extension on the earth removal permit, I think?
Oh, okay.
That's what the discussion was. The subdivision, I think you and I are working on separate.
Yeah, yeah. So this was just the interim as-built?
Yeah.
So I'm not sure what, what to.
Yeah, I think you're, you're seeking, correct me if I'm wrong, you had been granted an extension and this plan was to satisfy the board's requirement to see where you're at with the grades for an as-built.
Yep.
And then, and then, and then I think you were talking about maybe shifting some of the material around, if I recall correctly?
Yeah, it's been so long.
No, I think, I think that's where we left it off. So, so this plan kind of reflects where you're at with respect to what was permitted.
At that snapshot.
At that point in time. And maybe Rick had mentioned this, there was talk about shifting some of the material around internal to the site.
Yeah, so all that got shifted around was to subdrain the road and shoulders, you know, the sidewalk areas and that. So when they went back there, which was, I'm assuming, it's been so long after this.
Yeah.
Now the earth got kicked around to reflect the water proposed range.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
It's good.
So, I mean, they are moving along pretty well out there.
Yeah.
And I'm hopeful we could get some binder down sometime.
It may.
It may.
There's not much more work for you guys to do out there, is there? Other than?
Well, we also have the issue of, you know, restoration of the site and I don't know if you want to spend a minute talking about that.
Lumen seed, is that what you're talking about?
Sure.
So, so everyone knows, we have two things going on as we often do. This is an earth removal permit and a subdivision. So we have surety for restoration of the earth removal permit and at the same time we've got the subdivision construction going on.
Correct.
Go ahead.
So, um, the rear slope at the end of the cul-de-sac is shaved, so we're dodging raindrops. So the next thing to do is when it's dry enough, just load up the lawn, do that slope. Then the left slope along the sticks of Butters up there on Monroe.
Yep.
Can that be shaved because we're using that to load the lawn up?
Okay, so, so what I'm hearing is you are intending on restoring the site with lumen seed, even though these are lawns?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, and that's what I thought was up, was the direction of the board.
Yeah, 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 okay.
I mean, but to, while we're on that discussion, and we touched upon this at a previous meeting, everything's loaned, I'm looking ahead in time. The road binder, there's a bond on the roadway in place. A builder wants to build a house there and the grass is not established. You know, that was something that, because it, because like you said, Bill, we're in this kind of weird.
Transition.
Earth removal, kind of like.
It becomes a question on the lot releases, so that kind of swings it over to the subdivision side. You know, so there's the two things, are we going to release lots, assuming surety's posted? And then are we, what are we doing about surety with the restoration?
So it's a chicken and the egg.
Well.
Yeah, go ahead.
We're thinking about that because we are in discussion with the Butters.
Yeah.
And that may change the earth removal.
Yep.
To be determined. So one thing that we were thinking was there would be surety on the road. Then also there would be surety on the balance or whatever the board would determine for the earth removal. So there would be, if there are scenarios, it could be two surety.
The problem that arises, and we kind of experienced this on the Coines Street.
I'm not comfortable with building houses. Not comfortable with building houses.
Is now you have a different owner. You have, we don't have technically a right to go on our property and store something.
Yeah.
It's problematic.
Yeah.
From also.
Right, right. So, that's why we try to get the restoration done first before they transfer title to our property.
Yeah, I, I don't know how to reply out.
I mean, I'm willing to work with you and make recommendations for the board, but it's a complicated thing.
Exactly, and that's why our intent is to loan everything. But then, then that, I guess, asking, then that earth removal was closed out. Then something changes with the neighbors or the lots, the lots on the right,
Yeah.
Going in beyond the pond.
Yeah.
Those will have cut, there'll be an earth removal for those. One slope, so there'll be future.
So, yeah, I mean, you almost want to stage, I guess, the subdivision plan then? If that's the case?
You want to clean up lots already there.
Well, you want to do the front if you're going to go...
Yeah, I mean, and I...
Well...
And that's why I was saying.
It's one or the other.
I recall a discussion about some of the grades changing and maybe you want to deal with that now.
We're, we're building it to the proposed earth removal.
Right.
Which is, which is a combination of the subdivision and the...
Yeah.
Right. Roadway grades and the slopes. So, that's what we're doing now.
Isn't every house going to sort of work with the approved and completed, um, uh, earth removal that you, you put grass and lawn on and then you've cut a house out of wherever you're putting it?
Correct, but those house lots, we had this discussion, Jimmy and I, with, uh, Gary Ayer last week. Because of those lots on the right beyond the pond, when those get designed and go for a building permit, there's going to be an excess of 300 yards and will require an individual earth removal.
Well, why can't you mediate and work with the slopes out of there and build a house? With, for the most part, you don't have 300 yards.
Yeah.
You have 50 yards.
No, it's just, uh, we...
No, no, no.
Listen.
Yeah, no, I, I just...
Yeah. Although, the, the...
We're, we're looking for suggestions.
300 yards.
I think what we're, we're trying to do is wrap up the earth removal.
Correct.
But, um, we wrap it up. Seed it, loom it, seed it, get it all done.
Yeah.
Finish it. So...
That's our intent.
These grades are pretty darn close to what was permitted.
Yep.
Right.
Yeah.
Get it all to...
So, they got a lumen seed at this point.
Correct.
Yeah.
And that cleans that up. I think that takes down that off the book, if I'm not mistaken.
That's our, that's our intent.
And then the intent to move forward is up to you on what you want to do.
Yeah, and at the same time, it's binder and then people are trying to fill lawns.
Yeah, I mean, I can't see building and releasing lots while there's, while there's a...
Open earth removal.
While there's an open earth removal pit and, and that just... Can't do it.
I understand, it's, um...
But, Bill...
And that, that's what our, our intent is, is to shape this law.
Do it to what? Your permit is law.
Yeah. Closing out that one. But you're, you're allowed, uh, an applicant, any applicant would be allowed to do an earth removal under 600 yards, right?
300 cubic yards per year.
Per year.
So, it's a whole year.
Per what? Per, per?
Per property.
Per property.
How many?
300 cubic yards.
No, I understand, it's just, so then, let's put, let's take, we're going to...
Yeah.
That's another day.
Yeah, another day.
Yeah.
Just recognize, I recognize.
Don't open up that can yet.
Yeah, because we ended up in that can, that's where we're learning.
We want to get off the can.
Right, it's been a learning experience for sure. All right, anything else, Bill?
Not on that.
No?
Unless you have anything else you want to talk about. So, I think, uh, we can take that off the agenda. Just keep moving on the restoration, I guess.
Yeah, that's good.
Thanks, I, I hope so.
So, um, moving on to the next item.
Yep.
This is earth removal permit for Glenn Street. I was out there today with, um...
For you.
With Murray. Kevin, can you go to that link? So, the top one is...
Chris, Chris, Mr. Chan?
Yes, go ahead, Trace.
I'm going to recuse myself from item two and three under discussion.
Okay.
I'll see you back.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Trace. Let the record show.
Yep.
Tracy will excuse herself for items two and three.
Okay.
So, site photos right there. So, I went out today, these photos are from today. If you hadn't interested in getting a closer look on the photo, Kevin, you could click on it and it'll... So, basically, the, the site is in progress. So, this site, as you know, has an earth removal permit that expires on May 8th of 2020.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Okay.
Which is prior to our next scheduled meeting.
Correct.
So, if you can see, there's a lot of areas that require lumen seed and stabilization.
Yeah, I guess, yeah. Bill, can you just describe the pictures because I, for the audience as well as me? No, no, what, what has loom, what has seed, you know, what has what material on it? So, it's just tough from this angle and for the audience.
So, maybe, Kevin, if you could back up one?
Yep. Scroll up.
No, 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 uh, back up to the last screen, yeah. Can you click on the second one? Okay, this is the as-built drawing that they've submitted, scroll, oh, that's the transmetal shoe. Just close, close that, Kevin.
I think you used the...
Yeah, the, the third one, sorry.
This one?
Nope. There you go. All right, scroll down a little. Okay, so here's Glenn Street.
Yep.
The site is, that's a wetland down the property. But basically, the earth removal permit is everything here.
Okay.
Okay? So, what I do, I start walking in from Glenn Street into the site. The first tall slope you see photos of is going to be here. This is all a stone driveway at this point.
Yeah.
Up to roughly around here somewhere.
Okay.
Then it's gravel. The second steep side slope is over here and here, there's a couple of washouts over in this area. This side slope doesn't look like it's been addressed at all, the one facing the solar farm. And this area is a little rough in terms of lumen seed. It's been loaned, but it looks like it's a rough shape.
The bottom, bottom left corner, is that been loomed and seeded?
This here?
Correct, yeah, right there.
That's been loomed and seeded, it had two big washouts and you'll see photos of it.
Yeah, I just, and the entryway one as well, that, which is on the right? Is that been loomed and seeded, that little, no?
This has not been loomed and seeded.
On the left?
This has some Eco-Aegis, uh...
Netting?
Erosion control fabric.
Okay.
Halfway.
Halfway?
Over here it doesn't.
Okay.
So, the, um...
So, that's where we're looking at right now?
So, this is as we're walking in the site.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll go up to one.
Okay, so this is Glenn Street, obviously, that's a driveway going up. This area on the right, um, you'll see is not lumen seeded.
Okay.
Scroll up a little. Again, that needs lumen seed, it looks like they're still grading it. This is that first slope on the left. This is the Eco-Ages, it's been sprayed with, uh...
That's long seeded and then...
Low seed and dew mash, so, okay.
Okay.
So, keep going. Again, that same side slope, same side slope.
Yeah.
This is behind the garage, there's a new garage, so this is on the right over there. This looks like it needs lumen seed or something over here.
Yeah, they just, yeah, so, go ahead.
Is that just a gravel driveway area?
So, over here, you can see they're actively loming.
Okay.
Keep going. This is where that first side slope, uh, transitions from the dew mash.
Yeah.
And you'll see there's rivulets from erosion.
Is that grass there on there?
There's some growth, yeah. But there's also a lot of erosion that's occurring here.
Okay.
Keep going.
Yeah.
This is going over the wetland crossing, that's why the boulders are there to keep you from falling into drink.
Okay.
This, this, again, you'll see the erosion rivulets on this side. And the, these things, you know, the, the material that's used, it's unscrewed loaned. It's, it's got a lot of cones in it.
Yeah.
It's got a lot of wood in it.
Yeah.
So, I did, Andy, uh, Murray did dig a little over here in his lawn.
Yeah.
But it's got a lot of other stuff in it.
And it's stabilized.
Um, so these are the two blowouts that I, I was talking about, and keep going, Kevin. You can see they repaired it, but as you go up and, and look closely, this is the kind of stuff that's in, in the soil.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So, this is, I think, washed down, they pushed it up, but this is, is the product that you have.
Yeah, so, can I jump in?
Yeah.
So, everything was loaned and seeded, uh, in late October, November. So, now you've got the whole winter.
Yeah. There's nothing going up.
A washout which makes the rocks appear.
Yeah, all expected.
So, that, that washout where those rocks are there on the top pitch there, those were two fox dens that dug in there.
Mm-hmm.
And then that created those...
Rocks?
No, not the rock, the, the need to repair them. So, that guy, you saw the guy, was the guy there with the...
Joe?
Joe.
Yeah.
You mentioned him.
Yeah.
So, Joe's a very talented individual.
He's very proud.
Yeah, he is proud.
Yeah.
So, what, and he'll address that, what he did was he purposely put a mix of rocks and stuff into the deep fox hole, the hole there. And then that, so what he's going over with a power rate through all those areas and where we're redoing them as we speak, uh, we would have seeded some of it today, but for the rain.
Yeah.
You still bring in all new material, right?
Yeah, so the, and this is back to the whole, which we're learning, we're learning together, I guess, the issue of earth removal permit house. So, like our front, everything was loaned and seeded. Now, the resident is changing things around in the front that.
Yeah.
I saw that.
Yeah.
So, you had a ready lumen seed?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, they kicked around last weekend. So, what we're doing, so what we're, so...
Sorry.
Because it's a person living there. So, that's the confusing part. So, what we've said to them and we know them, you know, we're going to loan everything and seed it. So, now we're treating, before it was a gravel, but now we're treating it as someone's yard. So, we're, have the power rate there, power breaking those rocks out of there, redoing the back. It's a whole different story now. So, that's why we had wanted to put the bond in because we know May 8th.
Yeah.
Even today, it's just...
So, I, I mean, I've got a recommendation on that, but...
So, that's kind of the rest of the story. So, yeah, it's, it's, we're frustrated, you're frustrated, but it's...
Probably get a better, better one now.
The situation of someone living there. You know, there was a horse issue yesterday, there's three horses living there also.
So...
Don't like equipment. No, there's a barn there. So, there's the earth removal and a person with a lot that has their wishes that we're trying to...
Right.
Close up.
He can be some bittersweet, I'll take.
Yeah.
I think we're almost done with the photos, just to wrap it up.
Okay, so you got some recommendations, Bill?
You know, it's, it's just, and that's the backside.
Yeah, I know, we looked at that with Joe, Joe D. today.
Yeah, that, that needs to get done.
Yeah.
There's a tree there, I don't know if that's a big...
They're taking that, they're taking that out.
Okay.
I walked the whole thing.
Yeah.
Today with Joe D. and, and the owner.
Okay, and that's the replication area, which is going to come to issue.
Okay.
And I think that's it. So, um, what I was going to suggest, because May 8th is coming up quickly.
Mm-hmm.
Murray had submitted a new draft application.
Yeah.
You know, it didn't have fees or anything for our review. And I looked at it and, and actually it had the, the new owner as applicant, which I think complicates things tremendously.
We didn't know how to do it.
Yeah, I, I think, I think the current applicant should be, be maintained throughout the project.
Is that GBI?
GBI.
Yeah.
So, if they're willing to, I would say they need to. Otherwise, you know, we get into a situation where the new applicant's going to have to post surety for the entire site. You know, not just, because I understand some grades still may change, is that the case? That's what Murray said?
Minor back.
In terms of material going out.
Yeah, minor up back.
And so, so it's not limited to that little minor area, we're talking about bonding the whole site.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, I, I would hate to have the new owner be responsible for something that they didn't do. So, so I would suggest that you have the current applicant be maintained throughout.
Yeah.
For the one-year extension that Murray mentioned to me. You carry the surety through that time period, the current surety, same thing. And then, you know, we wrap up the project. Now, um, here's the hook, we're at a point in time where, where the board has to take, take action or direction on this because May 8th is the end of the, the permit.
Yeah.
So, I would ask that the board consider, uh, if I don't get a permit application days Thursday, let's say Monday, by Monday morning, from GBI, for one-year extension.
Tracy, you listening?
She's off.
And then, then the board needs to vote to authorize me to begin proceedings to court surety.
When, when's the date, uh, when that, when it expires, Bill? I just, I just, I, yeah, I just want to look at the dates. So, you're talking... Next Friday is when it's up?
It, it's not a complicated thing.
No, 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 yeah, right, no, no.
Everything's the same, it's just one-year extension, it's, it's the application.
Yeah.
Excuse me, just refilling out that paperwork and having...
Yeah, I, yeah, so, so at least get you a, a draft.
They don't file it by Monday, where's my calendar here?
Monday is one...
Monday the fourth, Monday the fourth.
Morning.
Then I instruct town council to start pulling the surety.
Yep.
They can't file.
I would, no, no, but...
I'll give you till noon.
Yeah, I mean, just in case the revisions are not right or something's missing, I, the fourth, and then you can go on Tuesday the fifth.
All right.
The town council.
They can't file before Monday. They can file on Monday.
Huh?
They can file it tomorrow.
It's not that complicated.
Yeah, yeah.
Tomorrow's a Friday.
The town hall's closed. Yeah.
You can't get any air.
It's the review and stuff.
They're going to hold it.
Yeah.
They could drop it in the box, too.
I think what you're saying is legit. I mean, it's the eighth, we're not going to meet before then.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I...[1574.54] I need a vote. I need a vote.
Yep, you need a vote.
Do you need a motion or?
Yes. You're gonna, you're gonna need a motion and a, and a, and a vote.
So we're gonna have a motion where Bill is authorized to move on removing surety if he has no information by?
A complete application submitted.
By Monday.
Mon, Monday, the fourth.
Noon.
Okay.
At noon time.
Monday, the fourth.
Fourth. All right, that's the motion.
That's the motion.
Second. Motion made by Mike, seconded by Aaron. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. One abstention from sure, from Tracy because she's confused herself. Okay. We good, Andy? All right, anything else for Andy?
I'm not looking for decisions on these two things.
Okay.
These are not on the agenda, but I just wanted you, if you don't mind, Kevin, down here. Looking sleepy hollow first. Oh, we already talked about this. Yeah, yeah. Okay, go back. And Dupine area E. Andy, I don't know if you wanna talk about this.
No, that's fine.
Composite plan showing various contours. Do you wanna talk about this?
Yeah, so for last meeting, I think the board, Bill, asked just if there was a plan. So what happens with area E, which is the De Vries family?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
That property line, coincidentally, is the town line Sutton.
Yeah.
So in Douglas, you have the De Vries family.
Yeah.
And Sutton, you have the Doine family.
Yeah.
So what's always happened is pine would do the design for the De Vries family. And this goes back, I don't know how many years. The board would know. I would. Mary Bedoin, and that would have been heritage. And then Mary Bedoin has always done her own engineering with G and H. So all this is, I think, Bill knows.
Yeah.
So what you see here is, is a carrier plan done separately from the heritage plan. And they, Bill's pointing at, is the grades don't jive because they were done independently.
Yeah, yeah.
And we're at the same level, so it hasn't become independent in the real world, but on a plan, the proposed grades at the town line don't jive. So I think, Bill.
So the, the thing I mentioned to E, Murray today, sorry, is this plan is confusing as heck.
Put the gap.
Well, yeah, unless you're familiar with the site.
The goal is you have a mound in between two towns that they wanna knock down.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not rocket science. They don't close those lines.
No, no.
But, but, but there's contours on top of contours on top of contours that are all representing different things. Probably on Douglas's side, at least three different sets of contours from different time periods. And, you know, I know what's going on because I know it.
Right.
But it's not clear.
Yeah.
So maybe the thing to do, guys, what, when we looked at that, to put, just all we did was put the area plan up to the. Perimeter.
Right, yeah.
Allen plant, Allen. I believe, and I'd have to look at the grades. But what happens is the De Vries property's up here, town line's here, the Bedoin property's here. So it's someday it'll be.
Not in reality, on plan.
On plan.
On plan.
Reality, it's like this.
Yes.
And then slope bounds with the town line here. So I think where you're leading up to is there should be some coordination between the plan.
Well, well, I mean, simplify.
Yeah.
That's, that's not acceptable.
So no, and we weren't trying to be acceptable. What the board asked for, is there a plan for Sutton?
Yeah.
And there is. And that's what it is. So that's what we did.
Okay.
Because that was the question from the board. Is there even a plan in Sutton?
Yeah.
And yes. But they don't jive, they don't jive.
Correct. Because your earth removal, you're, you're coming.
Different now.
To them, sure, yeah. But you're, you're removing the material out of Sutton, but you're accessing, equipment accesses through Douglas and you're already earth removal in Douglas, so, yeah, since you guys are on point for doing the work, you know what I mean, you should be on point with the engineering to make sure everything comes together on one plan.
Okay.
So, that's it.
I just wanted to.
Yeah, happens. Yeah.
So that's all I have for Andy.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, Andy.
Thanks, Andy.
So what do we got? Number four, Bill?
Okay, 93 Davis Street. I think somebody is in the meeting room for this. So we've got an application for a site plan review. I'm just asking for the board's instruction. My recommendation is, you know, I'm predisposed indefinitely for the most part. You know, I'm probably spending eighty percent of my time on other things. So I'm recommending that we send this application out for peer review.
Sure. Yeah, to who?
I'll solicit.
Soliciting proposals.
So the hearing's gonna open probably.
Yep.
And wherever.
Okay.
Area headset, I don't know.
Yep.
And so it, before it opens, at least we'll get the ball rolling. Get a package.
Do you need a motion?
Is that?
I do.
Yeah, is, is that consultant gonna come before our board with?
Yes.
I mean, because if you're overwhelmed.
So what, what, what I'd like to do is solicit proposals. I'm happy to send all the proposals out to everyone here as well as the applicant. I'll communicate with the applicant and see if they have an objection, you know, and I'll talk to Ernie too. On who we perceive as low bid. Or we could just make a selection at the next meeting. That might be safe.
Just in case.
That, that might be.
A conflict between the developer and that issue, that somebody that.
Yeah, you know what?
Yeah.
What I'll, what I'll do is I'll share it with them and then I'll distribute it for the next board meeting.
That's, that's.
So that you guys can make a recommendation at that.
And make sure everything's on.
Yeah, now, now I think someone is here in the chat room.
Yeah.
For this, so.
Yes, that's me. This is, I have T.
T who?
Okay.
T and Z, T and Z that you see at the top, because it's 93 Davis.
What's your full name?
Yeah. Have your name and address, please?
And your last name?
Madison.
Okay, okay. Teresa Madison, okay. Yeah, so I think that's the way they perceive, I just, Bill, if we're gonna bring in a consultant, just so the consultant works with the board directly for the review of this, if you're, you know what I mean, to not get any misdirection or any confusion. If you're weighing in and the consultant's weighing in, they'll cause more confusion.
I mean.
The consultant knows our bylaws.
I see something they didn't catch. That's not in compliance. I'm gonna comment on it.
Yeah, yeah, your comments go to, to them, right? Would go to the engineering consultant.
No.
No, no, he'll. Okay. He's still our engineer. All right.
That's unusual.
Well, it, it's just, it's unusual when we have a consultant weighing in, you know, that's why.
We, we hire them regularly.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, three. All right, so we wanna make a motion?
Are we putting up this, can you explain to me what we're doing? Is we're gonna put this out good and then you're gonna decide on somebody at the next meeting on the 13th? Or are you gonna make that decision and then we'll be on the agenda to the 13th?
Maria will contact you when the hearing is scheduled. The next meeting is when the board will make a decision on a consultant.
Yeah. And make sure there's no conflict with.
For next meeting.
Appropriate too.
So the next meeting is gonna be a decision as to who's gonna be the consultant?
Yes.
Correct. Yep.
So we're gonna vote that, you're gonna put it out so we can get to that next meeting and you can make a decision as to who it's gonna be?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
We're gonna vote, we're gonna vote right now and then hopefully by the next.
Okay.
Okay? All right, Bill, anything further? Okay, someone wanna make a motion, please?
So motion needs to be made that a site, that Bill solicits consultants?
To.
The J E H L T Estate Investment Company for the 40 Depot Street?
No.
Site plan review.
Yep.
That's for, no, no, wrong one. 93. No, 93 Davis.
93 Davis.
Oh, 93 Davis. We'll see trust.
Yes.
Yep, okay. I'll second that. Motion should be by Mike. Somebody second it? I'll second it. The other Mike? Okay, any further discussion?
Thank you very much.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tracy, are you still on? You back on?
I'm sorry?
No, no, not you. Member in the audience. We're all set, yeah, all right, thank you.
But I have a break now.
Thank you.
Is Tracy back on?
She's skipping number four also. She's still on the call. She's just.
Number four's the, uh.
You didn't, camera shut off.
Number four's birdhouse.
If you looked at her.
Maybe not a legal name. Who cares what the business?
All right, well.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's Teresa Madison? Is that a business?
That's what she said.
Z and T is the business.
What is it?
They are a recreational marijuana facility.
Yep.
Oh, it's not Carol's?
No.
She's got a host community agreement already in place with the town of Douglas.
Oh, good, excellent, good. I, I heard about it. I didn't, I didn't see the plan yet. Someone said they're opening up shop next week. And I was like, well, I haven't seen the plan.
They are like blasting through the permitting process through the.
No, I'm just. So I just heard that they're opening up shop next week and I was like.
Z and T?
Yeah. Okay. You can get your Z and your T. Is there a way that we can let Tracy know that we'll come back on or is she?
Uh, if somebody has her, like, she's still on the conference. It's just, like I said, she's muted out and she's got her camera down.
All right, okay, well then, well, nevermind. All right, so. The vote will be all of us.
There's Tracy.
Hi, Trace, you back?
Hi, I'm back.
Did, did you, on the last vote for us to get an outside consultant, did you take part in that or no?
No, she can't.
She abstained. You were excusing yourself from that too? Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Thank you. You're back now then, okay. Number four. All right, Bill, next one?
Next one's 40 Depot. In your packet is the decision which Ernie signed. I did send that around and solicit comments.
Yep.
The only thing I wanna point out is number 32, 33, and 34, were discussed at the last planning board meeting and it wasn't in the draft.
Yep.
So I added those three things and that's it.
Yep, okay. All right.
In your packet, you have an email from the town accountant regarding the planning board budget. She's looking to see if we think we have any surplus funds that we would make available to the town as a result of COVID-19 stuff. Okay?
We've been taking our chairs now.
No chairs for you.
No.
So currently we have 1,200 left.
What do we use for peer review?
Comes out of the. That, that's part of the application.
Yep.
So we have 1,216 left. So I do wanna point out if we do have a zoning hearing for town meeting, that's gonna be advertised, that's gonna be roughly 260 bucks.
Yeah.
And we're looking at potentially, but not necessarily solar, revised zoning map, and then we've had talks about non-conformal laws, but I don't know.
We did 200 bucks?
Well, well, here's the other thing is, is, you know, I don't know, printers and other equipment that we need for planning and stuff like that. I mean, the one that's in your, in your office area, that thing's pretty ancient. The printer and copier that's in the middle aisle.
Yeah.
About just, no, but I'm just, you know, but we also talked about other expenses that we're not, mailings are other things that we may have to do, so. 1,200 dollars doesn't give us, doesn't go far when we got things.
Couple hundred bucks, you know. What I'm saying is like everyone's catching on.
Yeah, Bill, you.
So I add some logic here, you know, two, six, let's say 300 bucks for three hearings, that's 900 bucks.
Yep.
Keep that in the account and then give the balance.
Well, keep 1,000 bucks and give the balance.
Yeah.
It's something.
What are we gonna do? How much?
We have 1,200.
Correct.
Yeah, so.
So keep 1,000.
Maintain 1,000 in the account.
Okay, and so give 200 dollars towards the supplies?
Yeah.
Where's it going? The 200 dollars?
It's undefined.
No, it goes into the. General fund. Yeah, so I'd keep 1,000 dollars. If we're moving funds, you need a vote on that or we just?
Yeah, I need a vote.
Yeah.
And then she's gonna need an email from Murray.
Do you want me to explain some of the?
Sure.
Transfer parts of it? So right now, because we're not doing a town meeting, the only thing that we are authorized to do legally for funds is to transfer between departments. So that's why Gene's reaching out to the various department, such as zoning, saying, all right, I can do a fund transfer from zoning to, let's say, you know, the fire department for the acquisition of masks or wherever it is. Until we actually go to town meeting, we can't have a solidified budget and we cannot take anything out of free cash.
Okay, okay, I see. All right, so that, that sheds a little more light on it, you know what I mean, because that's a little, so. I'm, I'm okay with the, you think 300 bucks, then we can, we'll put the 900 towards what Jean needs.
I think you said 1,000.
Well, yeah, but.
And then just give the balance.
Because we're running possibly near.
All right.
Because if we run short.
Yeah, then we're in a world, yeah, okay. So, all right.
Motion. So make a motion to.
No, I'll second you.
Okay, make a motion to maintain, to give 200 dollars towards fund transfer as needed by the town of Douglas and as the selectmen will engage in which direction it's going in.
Town accountant would.
Town accountant, yep.
With advisement.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Aaron, seconded by Mike Z. Yep. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries.
So that's transfer 200.
Yep. Well, if we had more money, we'd transfer more.
No, that's fine. I just wanna be clear. Okay, for your convenience, I included a link to the solar bylaw and it's in your packets.[1539.44]